Should I pass it to staff? Or should we just? Okay, I'm going to pass it to Courtney Tanner at this time. And Jerry Wendell is on his way. And thank you for being here, Mr. Schlink, Councilmember Schlink. Courtney Tanner.
Good evening, Mayor. I'm going to cover two items for the evening. The first is Attachment 7, and then the other will be Attachment 8. Those are the two new attachments that were included in your packet, in addition to the Attachment 3 that we've been updating each time. For Attachment 7, I received three new questions. So the first question is to provide aerials for maps for the last 10, 20, and 30 years. It didn't have the specific years, since we don't run aerials every year, but the ones I did have during that timeframe have been provided as Exhibit A. And the next question was what is the projected growth for the town? So based off of town data, and that's using our approved projects plus our census data population, we break it down by single-family attached and detached as one type of population per unit, and then multifamily has a different population per unit. Using those projections, it's estimated by 2023 that the population will be 36,260. However, if we continue at our current rate of growth, the town could reach 47,000 residents by 2030. Specific sources used for that projection are also cited in a footnote. And then last is to provide additional summary details related to written comments received on the draft transportation plan. So if you look at Exhibit B, we've broken the information down, and we broke it really type in three ways. We have total comments received to date. They've been broken down by discrete comments. So for example, say my husband and I each provided a comment. That would be counted as two discrete comments. And then we also went down to kind of discrete addresses. So even if we may have received, say there's five people living in a home, and we received five discrete comments, we just saw that as one discrete address. And we went through, and as best as we could, you know, we had some people, for example, just using my name, Courtney Tanner. It came in as C. Tanner, Court Tanner, Ms. Tanner. We saw it a variety of different ways, but with a single address. So we use that as kind of one discrete comment and then address. So we broke it also out further into the comments received as part of the Planning and Zoning Board process, as well as the comments received to date as far as the Town Council process, and then total. You can take a look at the information. It's broken down into different address types by jurisdiction. We've had people provide comments outside of both Cary and Morrisville. And we did break it into dwelling units, as well as business as a whole. So that's in there. You can take time to peruse that. And if you have any follow-up questions, I'm happy to answer them. Moving on to Attachment 8. As a follow-up to the last meeting, we talked about the Millicent Way extension. Really, the takeaway that was kind of a general consensus is the preferred preference was a greenway. Wasn't a formal vote, but kind of straw poll. You know, everybody said they supported the concept of a greenway. So what I've put together are five options to consider. And each one of these options changes the plan slightly different. One, Option 1, I should say, includes emergency access, and Option 3 includes the emergency access as well. So basically, the connection where the right-of-way exists today between Willingham and Little, it can be built as a greenway, or it can be built as a greenway that can support the weight of a truck, of a fire truck. They look very similar. We have several of them throughout town, but that is an option. So if you look at Option 1 and Option 2, they're virtually the same option. The only difference is Option 1 has the emergency access portion of it, and Option 2 does not. And that is a straight greenway connection from, you know, Little down to Willingham. And then if you look at Option 3, as well as Option 4, it's taking the greenway and adding a segment that will then connect the greenway all the way up to Davis Drive. Now, this is not in our jurisdiction. Granted, the connection all the way up to Little is also not totally in our jurisdiction, but it would require funding for, in order to build this, to be outside of town boundaries. Again, Option 3, emergency. Option 4 is not emergency. Staff doesn't have an opinion, honestly, on whether emergency or non-emergency, specifically the Planning Department, because that really falls outside of our purview. We would support either option, but our preferred option really is 3 or 4. If you went with the non-emergency option, it would be 4. If you think about the connection of 147, if it does come into Little Drive, the volume of traffic on there can be a fair amount that will be heading Little up into RTP. There's a school that's under construction now, Parkside Valley. There's a potential school that will be located on the corner of Little and Davis. Staff has an opinion it's very unsafe to have children cross Little to get to the greenway that's on the north side of Little Drive that RTP built, and then have them cross back over to their differing schools. So if we're going to build a greenway, we should do the greenway properly so that the kids can have a continuous loop. And really, it would be an amenity for the Breckenridge residents, because they could have a nice loop, go down Little, around Little, down Davis, and back up Parkside Valley Drive. And also, staff has an opinion, if you really wanted to go with Option 1 or 1 or 2, staff doesn't support that, and we would recommend no greenway option at all if you really wanted to have that path. What I need at this point is direction from council on which their preferred option is, so that the appropriate changes could be made in the plan to reflect the desired greenway path.
Okay, so council, towards the end of our last meeting, it was getting kind of late, and we all sort of decided that we were going to decide at the beginning of this meeting how we were going to go forward. We gave general direction to give us greenway options, which they have presented to us. So I propose that we go ahead and decide on the greenway, and then decide whether or not we also want a road connection, because that was also the second option on that. So any thoughts on that process? Councilmember Schlink.
I'd prefer going forward with Crabtree Crossing Extension. That's why this meeting's here tonight. Millicent, I think, is going to take more. This is new information. I don't think it's been worked out with the HOA or anything like that. I've talked to people who live in that neighborhood, and this was something that wasn't brought up. It wasn't in any comments. But so I think our time could be used more wisely if we talk about Crabtree Crossing and kind of have a mini-vote on that.
Mayor, I think this one is a really, really simple discussion. I don't think it's going to take much. I understand the HOA hasn't been involved, but we do have the HOA president, who is also a council member, so I think he's fully briefed on the issue.
Councilmember Garamella.
I've been told very strictly not to represent when I'm on the council here. So I've learned my lessons, and this is new information from me, too. But nevertheless, you know, I'm for the greenway, not for the road. And this option, I didn't look it up closely. That's my take on it.
Councilmember Johnson, please.
Okay. When we left the discussion the last time, we said we would come back to this first, handle this one, because we did think it was going to be kind of a quick discussion and then move on. So we're following what we all agreed to. So I'm not sure that this is going to take that long. I do have a couple of questions for Courtney, but good to keep moving here.
It sounds like I'm getting head nods on consensus that we should just go ahead and make this one happen, and we can do it pretty quickly. If you have some questions that you need answered in order to make this decision, if we could ask them real quick, because I think this is pretty straightforward. And even though Mr. Garamella is not representing the HOA, I would trust his judgment in that. He's spoken to a lot of people up in that area on this subject. Councilmember Johnson, you had a couple of questions?
So Courtney, you said you didn't want to weigh in on the whole emergency access, whether that was necessary or not, between the Option 3 and 4. Can we get the Fire Department, Police Department to weigh in? I mean, I thought when we went through the fire study last month, when that was presented to us, the, one of the drawbacks that we have in this town is connectivity. So, you know, connectivity for public service, public safety, I thought, would be one that they'd be interested in. So I just, if we could get somebody to weigh in on that, that might be helpful.
Assistant Town Manager Wright indicated he has input there.
Yes, so currently, we have plans for a future fire station to go in RTP, of Kits Creek Road. So this connection we're talking about for emergency access is important, because without that, it causes additional minutes in response to that development. But if, when the fire station is relocated, if there is a connection there, whether it's emergency access or whatever, it literally shaves off minutes to the response to that neighborhood.
I'll ask everybody to start using their red things. Councilmember Garamella, and then Councilmember Wendell, please.
We know that Louis Stevens is getting connected to Little Drive that goes straight up, and the fire station is going to be next to Net Abs. That's where the location, if at all, future, whenever it comes in. I think the plans have already started for, you know, runoff acquisition for Louis Stevens connecting into Little. So you have a clear shot coming into Breckenridge from the backside. You have a clear shot to come from the other, you know, all the locations. So for me, access is important, and I think you're going to get all your access. It's better than what it is before.
Councilmember Wendell?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Based on what Assistant Town Manager said, you know, I have a tendency to agree when we're looking at things from a transportation plan perspective. A, I think if we do the greenway, I mean, given the location of, within our town, I think it would be a phenomenal greenway for the folks who live in Breckenridge. And I mean, I live in Kits Creek right close by, and I would like to use it. At the same time, I think it really is important, regardless of where we have fire stations. Honestly, if there is, if there is access, one more access, if something else was blocked, and we can do it, and it makes sense, I would absolutely support a greenway with the ability for emergency access, especially given the schools that are going to be there, potential for, you know, traffic delays somewhere, and just another access point for the fire and rescue.
Sir, Mayor Potem, Councilmember Johnson?
I also like the option of having the greenway robust enough to support the weight of an emergency vehicle or vehicles, because there, it's very narrow back in the Millicent area. And at night, there's a lot of cars there. So to have that ability to just get that, those vehicles through without having to traverse the roadway itself, I think is a win-win for the town and the neighborhood.
Thank you. Councilmember Rao, then Councilmember Schlink.
I don't know what the process is after this, but I think it's a great idea, and I'm in full support.
Councilmember Schlink, please.
I think this is why I wanted to bring in the neighborhood. We need time, because, again, I think everybody's for a greenway. It's just whether the road or not. So I don't, and I think the neighborhood needs to understand that, so we can get a better idea. That's why I postponed this.
Okay, so before, Ms. Tanner.
I'm going to say, my apologies if I didn't make it. So nobody would be able to use it for emergency access. The similar drives Savannah on the south side, how they have a greenway, it looks like a greenway, it is, for emergency access. Cotton Place, as you're heading towards the airport, you'll see the greenway on the left. That's actually designed for emergency access as well. So no vehicles, other than emergency, would have the ability to use it. My apologies if that was not clear in the options that I laid out.
Councilmember Johnson.
Okay, so yeah, so this is a greenway that would have the ability to have emergency access or not. And then Option 3, Courtney, you're indicating that we should show not only the greenway at the forum in Millicent, but all the way down Little to Davis.
That is correct.
So I get that. That's outside of our jurisdiction. Would it, what, are there opportunities to fund that so that the town wouldn't fund it? What are the plans in RTP? Would they fund it?
So, and Martha was trying to say that the current plan at RTP, they've already built, is on the north side of the road. However, again, this is, there's no finances associated with this. So if there was a CIP project to actually develop this down the road, that's when we could reach out to RTP at that time and have that discussion. So I'm going to kind of rein back in that statement, that this is not about how much does it cost. It's whether or not you would intend to build it, and then that hurdle can be crossed when necessary.
Okay, I like that idea, just to put it on the plans so that there's, because right now, we don't have this on any of our funded plans. It's not even on our CIP list. So to have it out there for some future option, I think that's fine. And then, and then deal with the funding at the time, and hopefully, there'll be grant monies available in partnership with RTP to make it happen, because this is a greenway that's going to lead to two schools, or a sidewalk anyhow. Even though there's greenway on the, on the north side, on the other side of Little Drive, it's now important that there be one on the south side. And since RTP is well aware of those two school sites, I would hope that they would participate. And the school sites will have walkway and some type of sidewalk in front of them. Is that right? No?
No, they do not. Well, I can't speak for the future school. I can speak for Parkside Elementary. It does not have any improvements, other than some road improvements along its front edge.
And to be clear, if we asked for emergency access, greenway, and then in the future decided to sort of ramp that back, we could also make it not emergency access when we do the project itself.
That is correct.
Councilmember Garamella, and then Councilmember Schlink.
Do we have the authority to pay for, like, this greenway, which is not in our jurisdiction? Because, like, to my knowledge, we had Parkside Elementary, you know, the way they did their, you know, walkways. And then Town of Cary, it doesn't go into any other jurisdiction.
We do have authority. A perfect example would be our Cricket Park. Cricket Park was town funds built in RTP. Same, same concept. So town would build an amenity for the citizens of Morrisville. It just happens to be partially located in our jurisdiction and partially located in another jurisdiction.
Okay, so is council comfortable going ahead and making a decision on doing either 3 or 4 at this time? It sounds like everyone's in favor of the greenway all the way to Little to Davis. Councilmember Schlink, you have something to add, or?
Yeah, no, I'm not in favor of moving forward. As I indicated and say again, I think we need to consult with the neighborhood first, and I don't think it would take that long. We have plenty of time left in the process. Back for the greenways.
Okay. Does anyone else share Councilmember Schlink's opinion that we should wait?
To consult the neighborhood to ask if they want a greenway with an emergency access or a greenway at all? I'm unclear as to what the nature of the neighborhood request is.
With the emergency access and the sidewalk.
I'm sorry, but emergency access is just a prudent measure, and it's a little bit of increased cost. The greenway would be the same size, basically, so.
Just ask them for consideration. We're likely to end this out longer, and it needs to be.
Councilmember Johnson?
We have heard from folks up there that they would prefer a greenway. I mean, we have heard that information, so. This is, you know, this is an option on a plan, so.
So if, if you look at the comments provided under Option 3, excuse me, under Attachment 3, they've been categorized. You'll see there's Millicent Way-related comments. You know, read them for what they are, you know, what their comments have been about that. I think there were two individuals that lived next to it that had an expectation of a road, and majority of that, outside of that, said greenway was fine. And if you look at the history that was provided at the last meeting as well regarding Millicent, you know, it was left on there. And if you start really delving into the minister discussions of it could go greenway, it could be road, you just had to go back and take a look at it at some point in the future. And I think this is exactly what this board is doing right now.
So, did you have another comment? Are you up or not? No, okay, so.
The comments, I know everyone wants a greenway. Emergency access, we didn't talk from the survey that was taken. And going the greenway, personally, I like to Davis, but I didn't ask anyone. I'll be very transparent here, because all we said was work on greenway, no roadway. That was the key essence of the whole thing, that feedback that we got from everyone.
So I'd like to just move forward on this item and sort of put it to bed if we could. I believe that Option 3 is the one with emergency access and the long greenway. Is that accurate?
Yes, that's accurate.
Is the council okay taking a sort of consensus vote on that, and also embedding in that the fact that we do not want a road there? Or do you want that to be separate? Because I'm assuming that all this conversation is about also not having a road. Is that okay? Okay, we'll have that a separate one right afterwards. So those in favor of having on this transportation plan Option 3, which would be emergency access usable greenway, and the greenway stretching all the way to Davis Drive, please raise your hand. I'm not sure if, Satish, are you up or not? Right, and as I mentioned, if we want to ramp it back to make it just a greenway later, we could, when the project is in process. And I'm not sure when the greenway is actually going to happen. So I think when the time comes, we can have that discussion, rather than now, where we don't know about the fire stations and their plans and how that will be affected. So it looked like, can we raise our hands again? Just to, it looked like we had five. We have six in favor of that. So I think staff has consensus on that one. Is that accurate?
That is correct. Thank you.
So to set expectations, we have a hard stop at 6:15, and that was the first of two items. We're also hoping to get a little bit of into Crabtree Crossing Extension, which is another one that we're going to talk about. So I'd like to go ahead, and if, I'll start it, and I don't think we're going to be able to get to the discussion that we need to in order to have a similar consensus vote on that before we get to the workstation later in the evening. And to set expectations, there, we may or may not get to it later, depending on the time of the rest of the meeting. So I know that there was a lot of expectation of having an answer on this item, but I want to set the expectations now that we probably won't get it by 6:15, and then we're going to reconvene for a regular meeting at 6:30, and it's towards the end of that meeting. So if you would bear with me, I have some written comments to get us started. Okay, so two meetings ago, we each took the opportunity to share our thoughts about the Crabtree Crossing Extension, included on the plan forwarded to us by the Planning and Zoning Board. And if it's the council's will, we can provide staff direction on this item today as well. I would like to thank everyone for being so engaged in this process and for listening to stakeholders from all the neighborhoods. I see that we, as a group, have a great number of items on which we agree, and I think that's a great place to begin this discussion. We all agree that traffic and congestion are important issues to our town. We all agree that there are many things that we can do to improve mobility and connectivity, including widening roads, promoting alternative modes of transportation, including transit, and constructing new roadways. We all agree that traffic can have a detrimental effect to residential neighborhood. We recognize this fact so much that we have a traffic coming policy in place, which has been used in numerous neighborhoods, including Kits Creek, Preston, and Breckenridge, to install speed tables. We all understand that any sitting council has broad authority to study or build infrastructure, including roadways, whether or not such infrastructure is on any adopted plan. At one point or another, I believe each of us has indicated that there is no intention to build the CCE in the near future. And I'm keeping near future kind of vague, because I don't want this to be a point that we disagree about. I'm looking for ways that we all agree right now. Where we seem to differ is the permanence and finality of whether or not the CCE being on or off the plan we ultimately adopt will either preclude the possibility of the road ever being built, simply keeps the option open to be built in the future, where it means that the road will definitely be built. I personally believe that this is a potential road connection whose benefits will never exceed the damage it would do to an affected neighborhood. I further believe that it being on the plan, or not on the plan, does not guarantee or preclude it being built by this or a future town leaders. Each road connection is unique, and if we advocate to protect Town Hall Drive by saying no to 147, and we advocate to protect Breckenridge by saying no to Millicent, that helps inform my decision to say that I feel comfortable saying no to CCE. For me, it is not about more signatures or supporters. For me, it is how we can use and preserve the character of our town as we face all these external pressures on our infrastructure. I would like our shared vision to be, to advocate strongly to widen 54 and Davis Drive, and promote alternative modes of transportation. And only when we have exhausted all avenues to address traffic, would I expect the leaders at that time to seriously deliberate the merits of CCE. I believe the option and authority of council to build CCE will exist in the future, whether or not it is on the plan we adopt. I believe that the current zoning of parks, greenway, and open space, when coupled with the size, shape, and nature of the parcel itself, will provide this or future councils the ability to build CCE if they deem it necessary at that future date. 10 years ago, a council decided not to have the CCC, CCE, on the transportation plan. Here we are discussing the CCE. 10 years from now, I believe that town leaders will still have the option to build it if they feel conditions warrant it. That may upset some people, and it may provide comfort to others. I believe that some of you may disagree with my assessment as to the importance and urgency of the decision before us now, and that's okay. Each of us were elected to gather all the data we feel necessary to make the best possible decision for the good of the entire town now and in the future. If we all agreed on everything, we would not be adding value to the process. So that was my four minutes or two cents. Now, I'd love to hear from other people, and we'll see how many people we can hear from before we have to move on to the next thing. Councilmember Schlink, please.
For brevity, I would concur with you wholeheartedly. I think that was a good speech. Thank you. And I agree with you that it's needed, it's not needed now. It wasn't needed 10 years ago, and future councils can still decide that going down the road. But I would like to get to the mini-vote before 6:15, so thank you.
Councilmember Rao.
I just wanted to take a moment to sort of let my colleagues know my thoughts and the citizens of Morrisville on this extension. I want to first of all thank all the citizens who've weighed on this decision, not only those that are affected in the neighborhood of Preston, but also all of the leaders that are around this, different parts of town, who have weighed in through petitions and, you know, portal comments. But at first, it's very important for me for the citizens to know the way I arrive at a decision. And, you know, many years ago, we had many citizens from Breckenridge talk to us about their vision of having a park. And it wasn't high on the priority, but we listened to them, hundreds and hundreds of citizens. And today, it's one of the nicest parks that we have in the town. We have a very passionate council member, Jerry Wendell, and he took great efforts of getting Kits Creek residents engaged and Providence residents on the need for more schools. And we had success bringing former, the late Kathy Hardistown here, getting more schools built in Morrisville, getting a resolution done, and even the acquisition of the land from RTP, which I think all happened because we listened to those neighbors. We listened to the residents of Millicent about the uncertainty of a cut-through road coming through, even though we knew it wasn't going to be built, and we all say that we didn't want to have a road there. And we have a current issue before the council on the apartment complex, and many of the residents are in Cary. And we, you know, basically are listening to them. The point I'm trying to make is that, I got criticized today through an email that, are you listening to all of Morrisville? Are you listening to Preston? I want for the record to know that in the last eight years, I have worked tirelessly on this council, always thinking for the entire town of Morrisville. And oftentimes, just like the decisions that have produced great results, that was listening to those who were affected by the decisions we make. I feel like I shouldn't have to apologize for that. It's just the way that I make, make decisions. The second point I'll make is that I've had some healthy debate with Councilmember Wendell, and I think one issue that's clear is securing the right-of-way for future councils. But I do not believe that in an area of town with no street access in a floodplain, it really comes down to, you know, are you willing to gamble that 1%? But I believe that that road will not be bought, and that we could, anytime we wanted, without having CCE in the plan, you know, add it to the plan. The fire access and first response time was important to me, but not, I'm a little bit more comfortable about the Park West fire station. I've got a few more. But the most important thing is the, I think it comes down to the way we approach problems and develop solutions. and develop solutions. For me, a transportation project, even though it's a general cost of 8.5 million, is a significant investment for the taxpayers of this town. I believe that there's a lot of detail that needs to be determined and explored about any road project of this kind of magnitude for the .31 miles become the Crabtree Crossing. You know, how much are we going to, are the residents going to have to pay? We've got the 147 connection, which we've all supported for Davis Drive, and I'd like, thank you for reminding us, Mayor, that we all supported it going to Davis Drive, not Town Hall. We have significant road projects that are in the queue now, Morrisville Carpenter and McCrimmon Parkway. I think once all of these things are answered and these details are completed, we will be able to have traffic engineers analyze a potential extension, have more dialogue and debate with all the neighbors of the community, study together as a community, even the people on the northern side of Morrisville. Maybe we could have a citizen advisory committee or a subcommittee on connectivity, bringing everyone in to have a conversation on how do we get to yes. Clearly, there's more options than dividing one town against, one side of town against the other. At the end of the day, for all of those who have emailed me and called me, I unequivocally want you to know that I completely, 150%, agree with you. We have a connectivity and congestion problem in Morrisville. In fact, I would be willing to go out and get 30,000 citizens of our town to sign a petition that we need to execute viable transportation options that take traffic off the roads. We can do that together, everybody working together, Preston, Kits Creek, Providence, Everett's Crossing. And so, you know, that's really where I come down on it. At the end of the day, it's about how do we make a decision that is important? Absolutely, it's important. So, I'm not ruling out having us consider the extension down the road whenever that is. I do not believe, like the mayor reminded us, that we are going to be, we're in a, right now, the way the position, the way the issue is being presented, it's urgent, that if we don't do it tomorrow, it'll never happen. I don't think that's the case. I think we can execute on the urgent transportation projects, take it out of the plan for now, have more public debate and dialogue about it, and then after we study it in the fullest detail, we add it to the plan. That's just the way that I play. I think things should be studied to the fullest detail, and I think an $8.5 million project is a very important transportation project for the town of Morrisville, and I think it needs to be studied in further detail. But I thank everyone for weighing in, and that's where I stand.
Thank you very much. Mayor Protam Scroggins Johnson, please.
Okay, I'm not sure if I'm going to do the four minutes, but we'll see. Okay. Our motto is live connected, live well. Live connected, live well. Morrisville today is not connected. We are bisected by the railroad. We have recently suffered closures at Church Street, Barbie Road, and Morrisville Carpenter Road is a very challenging intersection, to say the least. The transportation plan as presented offers more options and more connections through flyovers, through local roads to connect, through building roads like the airport connection to Twin Lakes, like the Crabtree Crossing connection to link two sections in Morrisville, Morrisville Carpenter Road and Morrisville Parkway. It did offer the Millicent connection, although we identified that as a greenway need this evening. But we are looking to connect our city, which is not connected, in order for people to travel who live in Morrisville from one end of the city to the other, we have to go around the major roads. We have to travel on NC 54, we have to travel on Church Street, we have to travel on Davis. Town Hall Drive ends at a T-intersection, yet we are expanding Morrisville Carpenter Road, and none of the Church Street corridor drivers are going to be able to turn left onto NC 54, which is a safety concern for many. However, it is going to further congest the Town Hall Drive corridor. We are not connecting in a way that is alleviating. We are creating our own congestion problem through the designs that we have met. I would also offer that the transportation plan is a strategic plan. It is a concept design. It is not a detailed design. We should not be looking at where the curb cuts are or the driveways are. We should be looking at what connects our city from one end to the other. So, to be clear, we need to preserve the future options for growth in our city. Whether we decide to connect our city or not, the triangle, the region, and the entire area is going to be growing. There will be more cars and more cars. There will be more cars in Cary, more cars in RTP, more cars in the airport, and they are going to drive through Morrisville and to Morrisville. So, we need to take charge of our own town. I do want to address the concerns of the individuals that feel that they are most impacted. So, I'd like to kind of elaborate what I feel are the stakeholders in the transportation plan. Every Morrisville resident and every Morrisville business is a stakeholder in the plan. Our town is very small. We have 28,000 people. The size of the town is six square miles, so I value whether you live six square miles and on the border of Durham County or on the edge of Cary, your voice matters and is very important. Now, the Crabtree Crossing, I feel like the Preston neighborhood feels that they are the most impacted, and respectfully, I do disagree. Anyone that lives along Town Hall Drive, Morrisville Carpenter Road, Church Street, has to deal with Town Hall Drive, which is where this location is extended. There are no driveways in the proposed extension. There are trees. So, I have heard the concerns that we are going to be destroying driveways and ways of life. There is no proposed construction. There is no proposed project. The area of the extension currently has trees. So, as a member of the Public Safety Advisory Committee from 2008 to 2013, I've worked tirelessly to make sure that the town has a safe environment. As a citizen, I advocated, I advocated on the traffic calming policy for Kits Creek, for Preston, when we had a serious concern about Park West Village. We actually recommended to the town that they build a parallel road that would go from Morrisville Parkway to Cary Parkway, and I believe many of you take that today, that is by the apartments and the townhomes alongside the development. So, there are ways, when we have serious concerns about traffic calming and preserving our neighborhoods, to find solutions that actually are better than we ever anticipated, and I consider that one to be a victory for the town and for the residents of Preston. Kits Creek also had a concern about their traffic calming, and they had speed tables installed. We also had a closure of a railroad crossing, which changed their traffic to a point that they had no idea it would do that kind of change. They no longer had cross-traffic, but they had different kinds of issues with access and mobility. So, as we change our traffic patterns today, we will see differences tomorrow. We have two major projects going on. The McCrimmon Extension, which everybody knows that is going on by the Sheets Gas Station, we see orange cones every single day, but that will eventually be extended all the way to Evans Road. That will change the behavior of our drivers. We also are embarking upon the Morrisville Carpenter Road expansion to go to Four Lanes from Savannah to Morrisville Carpenter Road. That will again change how we traverse the town. With those two items complete, I think a study is warranted to look at the Town Hall Drive corridor, which includes Crabtree Crossing. However, I caution that if we don't have the right-of-way preserved for Crabtree Crossing Extension, we may not have that option in the future. Therefore, I feel we should keep the extension on the map conceptually. We should wait until those major projects are complete. We should perform a study, and then we should identify ways to make the town more connected. Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor Protam. Did anyone else want to weigh in before our 6:15 hard stop? Raise your things if you're interested. Otherwise, I'm going to see if we're ready to make a consensus vote. Councilmember Wendell, please.
So, I'm going to take us on a little bit of a journey and talk about a couple of things I think that are very important. You know, as a young naval officer, one of the things, first things I was ever taught, and anybody who's in the military is taught, that integrity is probably the most important thing that any soldier can have. And without integrity, really, everything falls apart. I have-
Okay, I'm going to ask if the audience, if they're going to be coughing or having problems, if you could leave the room. That'd be great. So, Jerry, if you can continue, and just things that are going to add value to our conversation, we appreciate it.
So, integrity is obviously very, very important. When we, actually, when I first heard about the Crabtree Crossing Extension, a month prior to my election, as far as how would I vote on it? And I didn't realize there was going to be a vote over a year ago, and as it turns out, there wasn't. But there was concern that if I were to be opposed to an extension that I was told was going to be a road, that it would result in my demise on council. The issue at hand, I believe, is a couple of things. One, the transportation plan specifically cites a right-of-way, and I would ask any, Mr. Mayor, you or the manager, anybody, to please correct me publicly if I'm wrong. But the transportation plan indicates a line that is nothing more, according to Courtney Tanner, than a placeholder or a right-of-way that would, in perpetuity, protect that piece of land so that today or at any time in the future, leadership of the town would be able to potentially put a connection to connect Town Hall Drive to Crabtree Crossing. There has never been, in the year that I've sat on council, either in conversations on the dais, at this table, or in private, has any council member talked to me about actually building a road. In fact, the only discussions that were ever held was the possibility of a road being built to what Mayor Protam Scroggins Johnson said, which was at the end of all of the other projects. And we know by listening to our colleagues from Campo and from NCDOT, that 54 alone could extend out all the way into the late 2030s, which is what I have communicated to my constituency. And so, when I look at what do we do today from a leadership perspective, or what do we do tomorrow, and frankly, what is in the best interest of not only the residents who live in Preston, because that is their home, that is their neighborhood? And I have said, and I will say again, and I think it actually made social media, was that I am adamantly opposed to a road, a new road going through Preston to Cary Parkway. I've never been in support of that. My colleague to my left, Councilmember Rao, made a comment, and I think this is, it's very indicative of why we have the segregation of our town right now. And I think he said it very innocently, is he talked about an $8.5 million project. An $8.5 million project is an impossibility when we're talking about a road that is going to be constructed 20 to 30 years from now. If we were doing it impendingly, yes, it would cost $8.5 million. But there has never been an intent of this council to approve a road to be built. And that is, I think, what concerns me more than anything, is the good people of Preston, you know, angry at me, I understand, and that's fine, but they believe with all the fiber, and I think rightfully so, that there is a potential intent to build a roadway that would ruin their neighborhood. And as much as I have tried to say, there is, that is not on the plan, that is not, has not been a conversation from any member of this council, it's hard to believe if you think that something is going to be built when it was never intended. I will say, as it relates to my decision-making with regard to the right-of-way, and I've said this publicly and in person with some of you, if we look back 30 years, if we look back 25 years ago, we have collectively said, the councils of the past have really gotten us into a pickle, which is why we have the traffic issues that we have today. Development was left to just go unabound. Developers were allowed to build residential areas without turn lanes, and as a result, we have, as Councilmember Scroggins, sorry, Mayor Protam Scroggins Johnson said, you know, we have a very chopped-up sort of grid here in Morrisville. Had the council 25 years ago had laid out, literally, lines on a transportation plan, today, we would not have the problems that we have today, because anytime development would have been built, there would have been roadways that would have coincided with them, and we could have looked at Coral Gables, Florida. We could look at Fort Myers, Florida. You can look at Naples, Florida. All towns have grid systems, and they don't have, they have lots of traffic, but not the congestion and bottlenecking that we have here. So, today, I don't, I have no intention of building a connector. I mean, I don't know, people think that that's true, but we have, in my opinion, we cannot lock the hands of the leaders of the future. I don't want 30 years from now, and this is the thing that I stand on, I don't want 30 years from now for the council to have looked back, and we don't know what the future's going to hold, as the people 30 years ago didn't know we would be where we are today. And if they had hindsight, which we have the gift of now, they probably would have done things differently, and they probably would have said, gosh, we should have protected some of the roadways. Now, I agree with the mayor, and I agree with everybody that's spoken so far, that putting, and I want the people of Preston to hear this too, because I think this is vitally important, taking this off the map, which we can do, I mean, I don't have a problem taking it off the map, frankly, is not going to change the fact that the roadway will at some point in time probably go in. So, I just, the only thing I've ever said is I don't want to give the people of Preston a false sense of security, that, you know, this is one and done, it's off, it's gone forever. And I think that, for some reason, we have given collectively, I'll say the collective "we," have given false hope to members of this town that it's never going to happen. And the only concern that I have with keeping it on is that it absolutely unequivocally ensures, without doubt, the protection of the right-of-way. Even if there was 1% chance that if it's not on the plan, that it wouldn't have, that future councils would not have the ability, then I don't, I'm not willing to take that risk for the future of the town. The last thing I wanted to say was the concern with, and I appreciate the concern of what traffic can do, you know, if the roads, if there was additional traffic that went through the Preston neighborhood on Crabtree Crossing Extension, but, you know, as I was driving just the other day, I did notice golf carts actually crossing Morrisville Parkway. And so, there's four lanes of roads that some golf carts were going across, and I think that, you know, although I appreciate it, I don't know that that is an argument to what we have before us. And I'll say it one last time, we're not talking about a road, we're not talking about building a road. We can't talk about $8.5 million, because that's some number that was brought up as a what-if a year or so ago. We're talking about a line on a map that secures the right-of-way. If that's not what we're talking about, I want someone on this council to tell me that's not what we're talking about, because that will either justify what I've said on social media and to the people of this town, or it will go against what I've said, and I will accept my error. Thank you.
Okay, so, we have advertised that this would be ending at 6:15. We have not heard from a couple of our council members. I assume that Councilmember Garamella and Councilmember Johnson would like to weigh in on this when we come back around in the work session later in this evening. So, at this point, thank you all for your thoughts. So, when we get back to this, you two will go next, and then we'll circle back and see what we'd like to do at that point. We might have some more discussion, we might have one more round, we might just take a consensus vote at that time. It'll be up to the council at that time. Is that acceptable to everybody? Okay, good. At this point, I would entertain a motion to adjourn this work session.
Move to adjourn the work session.
Okay, all those in favor, please say aye. Aye. Any opposed? Okay, we are adjourned. We will reconvene for our regular council meeting at 6:30 up on the dais. Thank you all for being here, we appreciate it. Town Council to Order, October 9, 2018, 5:31 PM. Thank you all for being here and being interested in our ongoing discussions about the continued work session to discuss a resolution to adopt a comprehensive transportation plan update. Ben Howell, long-range planner, is not here today.